I'm glad to lead this to the flag of the United States of America. To a rebapt, rejoiced, united nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you today again for your goodness and your grace and your mercy. It is evident in all that I do. We are nothing. We call upon you. We appreciate you for all that you do. Life itself. Now we pray your blessings upon this meeting today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Number three, approval of agenda. Do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
I second. Got a motion. We have a second. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Number four, approval minutes, six forty-seven eighteen. Do you have a motion?
Make that motion.
Motion. Second. Second. End discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Alright, number five, new business. A. Presentation of Plots of a Lot of Twelve U Ponytails, 2018 Dixie State Championship. Y'all, would you come on up here?
I might run them big old kids.
We just like to say we're very proud of y'all. We know it's a lot of hard work to get to the World Series. And we just want to recognize y'all as the Dillon County Council recognizes the Lot of Twelve U Ponytails for winning the 2018 Dixie State Championship. Want to present this to the 2018 Cyclone Ponytail State Champions. We're very proud of y'all. Y'all getting win. Y'all getting win.
David, you and Kyle, I want to present to y'all a check from the county council for $2,500 to help y'all with y'all's expenses on the trip.
We appreciate that so much. Girls, y'all press that. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, good luck, y'all.
Thank you.
There you go, sir. See? Five B, River Cleaning Bid.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, after the council approved the DNR World Recreation Resource Contract last month, we advertised the bid to Dillon Harold and Miss Stevens and stuff. How many did you get? We got three.
We've got one bid, this is a Newell Construction bid. Bid of $45 per hour for two laborers, boats, oars, and equipment. Next bid is some second generation tree service. Two men and all necessary equipment. He said $60 an hour. Third one is Seals Lawn Care and Lance Cady. He bid $55 an hour. I guess our lowest two is going to be trade oil and Mark Seals. What we're going to do is kind of split the river in half. One section above number nine, one section below number nine. I guess I'll just let the low bid take his place if we section the river he wants to leave up or lower.
What you're getting, what you're doing, you're getting two people to do the job?
Yes, I don't know. Split the river in half.
The two lowest bidders, what we're looking to get?
Yeah.
Two different guys.
With the lowest bidder getting the most.
And what's the Newell?
The Newell bid, he's a local.
Yes, uh-huh.
Guy. Okay, how about the other two?
They're all three of them.
They're all three of them.
What's the problem with one guy doing the whole job? Too massive or what?
Yeah, it'd be tough. I don't think you can get through one end to the rest of the other.
Remember last time, I think we were talking about it, they said last time they hired two. One started one end, one ran the other.
Newell lives down toward Fort, huh?
Yes, uh-huh.
And I know Seals lives in Linkside. Doesn't make sense that we should let one do the side north from number nine and one do the side south.
Yeah, but I was very fair. I was going to let Lois get his choice, which I guess I chose to take. Newell won.
Requires a motion.
But the motion is starting to accept the two lowest bids.
We got a motion and a second.
Second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Alright, five C. CDPD number four dash RP dash one seven dash oh seven. Planning grant exceptions.
Yes, sir. This is a grant through PD Regional Council of Governments. And it's just, it's like it says, it's a regional planning grant. And it's where they apply for funds to assist in their service to the counties in their region. And we're just a conduit for the money. They switch around from county to county. But this time they wanted Dillon County to be the conduit for the grant money. So it's just pretty standard. Y'all could approve it. Appreciate it.
Requires a motion.
I make that motion.
Motion and a second. Second. Got a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five D, Rio Grant number R dash one eight dash three zero two three. Change order number five and six.
This is in reference to the grant titled Project Badger, which is Harbor Freight. And it's just, the first one is just to increase some PVC water main to be installed. And the grant's going to cover that cost of $40,136. And then the next change order, which is number six, is only a 42-day extension on the contract due to rain days. It's for the same project. And that was recommended by our engineer and approved by the state Rural Infrastructure Department. Y'all could approve that.
Make a motion this time, Mr. Chair. We approved our I-8 grant change order. Five and six.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Second. End discussion. All in favor? Five E, recreational requests.
Okay, we have one from Frank Nelson that wants, he's asking for $150 from Jack Scott's Recreation for South Falls. We have another one from... This is from Shakori McCall. He is participating in a mission trip with Mechanicsville Baptist Church and was appreciated that she's helping this cause. Jerome McLeod, Edgake a hundred, C.D. Grace, hundred. Harold Navy, T.F. Bankly, a hundred. From Jack Scott. And then we have the Menon Dillon, South Carolina Community Committee Annual Festival Picnic for 2018. They are planning a fun field gathering and they're requesting the grass be cut. And they want a dumpster and two portages and clean the ditches and be put trash. And usually they ask for a donation. So I don't know if y'all want to give something to them, to the Menon Picnic?
Well, we haven't even got the new budget yet. I don't see why. Because I don't have funding. I'm pretty sure I did not.
No, you don't.
Okay, so we...
Not until we get...
Pass the book.
Right, right. Okay, but we can go ahead and do the dumpsters and the ditches.
Yeah, there should be some funds in my account too. We got to donate.
Alright, and that's all I have then.
You can drop one here. Look in my box. It may be a little bit of light. Scott said he got the budgets away.
I got the same butter I'm buying, but he didn't have any amount in there. What he cost us, Scott, so they want to do it.
He bought eight books, so he's a long way.
He needs that. They put the butter on it today because they're going to have this thing for all of us.
Yeah, they're going to put it. They have to do that.
You got some.
You shouldn't have to. Something didn't have to. It should already be there. Didn't it already be there? I mean, shouldn't we have money in our... We're just continuing?
I don't see that amount changing. And we are in a continuing...
Yeah.
And it'll, the way the ordinance was written also was to charge anything done during this period to the new budget period. So if you want to do it, I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but I mean, we're not going to have a better meeting before that. Money is needed. Is there any money left on anybody's account from last year?
It might be a low bid in jeans.
You're saying we can move forward on anticipation? We anticipate to have funds, doesn't it?
Right, and the ordinance is drafted so that anything that's approved during this period of time will get credited against the budget for this coming year.
Penbrook, $200.
$200?
Yeah, I got a letter in my box.
Yeah, why, this is for?
This is for Wayne Green. Penbrook University, University of North Carolina, Penbrook. I got a letter in my box. If I can use it against the new budget. So I'm saying $200. They'll give you a letter after the meeting.
Anybody else got one in there?
I got one. I got some letters in my box. And we're going to give Wayne Green. I got one for him too, $200.
You're giving $200 to each?
Yeah.
Okay, what about the Menon?
Is that right?
You want to give anything?
Fuckin' rain.
To the Menon, no?
No. Yeah, I'm sponsoring the rain. It's just $200. And the Penbrook University's $200. I have a letter in my box. Come on, me, Archie, and Jean's. What is that is?
I'm going to give these out while y'all doing that. This is for the next guy. It's a change. We need a pack. Y'all have been seeing this certification on the date.
Okay, this is Wayne Green. Event will be on August 11th at the City of Dillon Wellness Center. Got the same thing, oh, three of those. Oh, your office on you. Okay, and he's asking to please help our kids sponsor the rain at their dinner. Okay, Archie, you're giving $200 to Wayne Green.
I give a hundred. Hundred and what? Fifty to Menon.
Fifty to Menon.
Two hundred and one. Two hundred and one.
James, two hundred to Menon.
Two hundred for Wayne?
No, to Menon.
To Menon.
Hundred to Menon.
Okay, and Archie, you said something about Penbrook?
Yeah, I got a letter I'm going to give you.
Okay.
Got it last week.
That's $200. Did you want to give $200 to Penbrook?
Absolutely. University of Dillon.
Okay, that's all I have for right now.
Alright, that requires a motion for the recreational request.
Make that motion.
Have a motion. Second. Got a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Six, old business, Cyclone DHE contracted agreement, Dillon County Health Department.
Gentlemen, last meeting, this matter was before you and there was some issues to be cleared up about maintenance on the facility. I believe that was the only issue that you wanted me to find out about. This facility, we will pay, what we're required to pay is $14,500. That's force maintenance and operations. We'll still pay that. We're required to pay that. But it will be paid in the form of a lease payment to Pierce South for the lease of the facility for DHE. And if you'll see also in the letter that we've sent, this will probably also be reduced into writing in another agreement with Pierce South, but the letter also says there will be no ongoing maintenance requirements for Dillon County other than the payment of that lease payment. If that's, I mean, I think that clears up what you all had a question about. And if it does, we've requested to approve our sending of the letter and the agreement so that we can execute those and move forward on them now.
Requires a motion.
Make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Make a motion and a second.
Sir?
Got a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number seven, financial report.
I'll give the... Look, bank balances. Right now, our general fund, we have $3,219,490. All of that is accounts payables. A lot of the health insurance upfront for two months. But it's $1,969,516. At least it's an available balance of $1,249,973. On total restricted funds, we have $3,304,484.
You got that much here restricted fund?
Yeah.
Can you elaborate a little bit, Mr. Gannon, your restricted funds?
Okay. We've got $500,000 from Harbor Electric Grant. We're getting ready to spend that for Harbor Freight. Then we got the 20.5 mils for the debt service. A good bit of that is in there. Got $227,000 for Anderson Brothers. I think we carried over about $380,000 from last year and then plus what we've taken in this, so far this year.
You're saying this money is designated for those projects?
Yeah, it's already been designated.
That's what you mean by restricted?
Right.
Question? Eight, administrative report.
Okay, I don't have very much. Just actually, as Richard was just saying, the Harbor Freight Grant Funds have been requested. And this is based on the memorandum of understanding that was entered into on May 24, 2017, between Harbor Freight Tools and Dillon County. The county agreed to make available the funds that had been received by the county from Harbor Electric Co-op. Actually, a tiny amount of that was received from Central Electric, but it's all RDA money that they give to the county. And the agreement stated that the funds were to provide utilities related to the project. And Harbor Freight has requested these funds and that they have provided invoices that outline eligible expenses. So that's, we're going to try to get that to them this week. And there's also some other funds through the grant. Now, Richard can explain that better than me because he's been involved with it.
The other funds Harbor Freight has requested is from the RIF grant. The RIF grant was $5 million. How it's designated was $2 million was for the improvement of industrial roads. And $3 million was to be used for the land purchase and for site improvements for Harbor Freight. Harbor Freight has provided the invoices where they spent that much money on the site improvement. I think the land purchase ended up like $1.1 million. So out of that grant, Harbor Freight has requested the bounce was $1,893,674. And that comes straight out of the RIF grant.
That's part of getting restricted funds.
No, we don't have these funds yet.
You applied for them?
Yeah, they sent a grant fund and what, Commerce asked in front of the money to us to pay Harbor Freight their portion of that.
They're going to get them back when we ask to get it right. We're going to put the money up front and they're going to get it back when we get the grant, aren't you?
No, the grant's going to fund that money up front. When they send it to us and we send it on.
Are you going to wait for it to go to us?
Yes.
And will be done?
Yeah.
And another thing, I was just going to update you on the roads out there. The West Fairfield Road is 99% complete. And of course, that's the road in front of the port. All they have to do is go back and put the final striping down. There's some striping there, but they put something special kind down, thermoplastic or something. And they got to put those rumble strips down. And then on Industrial Park Road, they say they have got the rock base 62% complete. So they will continue with that installation. And then they'll do the final paving, the curbing, and the forced main tie-in. And they expect it to be completed around August 16th. That's all I have.
Questions? Thank you, Lisa. Number nine, ordinances. A. Second reading, an ordinance to provide budget appropriations for county purposes in the county of Dillon for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019, and adopt and implement rates and fees and for other tax purposes and county appropriation purposes, and to establish the tax minimum rebate for the... Requires a motion.
Make a motion. Got the second reading.
Make a motion and a second.
Discussion.
Got a second.
Yeah, did you say something?
Yeah, I want to discuss this project.
Okay. Got a motion and a second.
Were there a second?
Yeah.
Just looking over at the, some of the changes in the project. Like the trucker court for example. I hear the showing that her budget was $500. She spent $510,011 up to June 30th, which her budget was actually $531,000. So she actually, she actually didn't, she actually had $20,000 left in her budget. What I'm getting to her, she had a budget of $531,000. But where are we getting this extra money to put in these other budgets? We put, you add $14,000 to a budget coming up. That's what I was talking about when I say we get to paying these budgets. Where are we getting all this extra money from?
If I can ride in on that, if I can ride in just a minute, I've looked at the same thing as well. And I've looked at your budget ordinance and it got all these, it's got fee increases and it's got four millage increase that we're going to, we're going to raise taxes according to this second reading of this ordinance. But again, I got to agree with Council Kevin, when you look over, when you look over the budget, you see all these increases, but if you look back, some of them didn't even spend the money that they already had. Some of them didn't even use the money that they already had, but now they're getting additional money. I mean, we need to know what's going on there because, and the reason I ask that question, because last time we was in the meeting, we talked about not having a savings or having any money in reserves. If we got that kind of money, then why don't we put that money in reserves? If a lot of people didn't even spend their budget. And some of them getting $10,000, $8,000, $15,000 extra that they don't even need. I mean, tell me what's going on with that, Lisa. Do you know? I mean, y'all have department head meeting. Did they tell you they needed this extra money? Who's checking with them to see whether or not they're staying in compliance with the budget they have? Is they actually spending more money than they have or do they need extra money? If there's an increase in each line item or each department head, what is the justification for it? Are they harming more people? I do understand that the retirement has went up. I do understand that the insurance rates has went up. Certainly in those departments, they have not went up to $8,000 to $10,000. That's just a little too much. I would say something, Kevin, well, Scott, we had a workshop and they asked for another workshop. Y'all said we didn't need another workshop.
We're going to have this verdict.
It's not too late to have one up. I would agree with that, but not at the time to talk before this second reading. Because one judge have said concerning our budget last time when I was chair, if we don't get it done, if we do it in the second reading and it don't get done, we can't change it after the second reading. So I want to make sure now that we get it done. Because we can't change what's going on after the second reading according to what the court had said. So I want to make sure we get that done before the second reading takes place.
And we're planning by the issue?
That was not what the ruling of the judge was regarding the budget. As long as the budget, I believe the issue before was that the budget as advertised and as presented to the council in the packet that went out to the public was changed before the vote was held on. That was the issue for the second reading. That was the issue that the judge was addressing, even though the order does not, really not go far enough, I think, to explain that. As long as the ordinance, you can amend the budget ordinance next reading. My understanding of the law, and it's not in conflict with the order that Judge Nettles issued last year, as long as the, as long as the council amends the ordinance and that the public is on notice about the fact that the ordinance has been changed, it's fine. Of course, there'll be a public hearing.
Yeah, that part I get, Mr. Turner, and I don't challenge you because I do realize that you are in the legal field. But that's the point, that the plaintiff raised last time that we were there and the court, the judge at that time ruled in their favor. And that's all I'm saying is, now you probably right. I did find out different later, but at that time, that judge did rule that we had some problem with that budget. But my point again is this, my point again is this, not at the time, I believe, is to organize that.
Well, to go back to the budget process, Richard was here when it started. I believe they met with each department head or tried to concern them. They do submit requests and then of course it could have additional needs in it and so forth.
Well, when we see that, though, Lisa, I think if you look at it, if you look at the budget across the board, I think the 10% increase, about $2 million projected that the revenue come in, am I right? About $2 million. So we're pretty close to that. But my point is this, if we're going to raise all these fees, and we are, we're going to raise all these fees when this is passed and raise taxes. But if we do not have any money to save and put in reserve, then we're going to be right back here next year spinning our wheels again, trying to raise taxes and get revenue again. I'm saying if we got all this money and these people, some of them have not spent their budget. Some of them have not went over budget. And it's clearly if there's no change in their department, they don't need any extra money. If there's extra money in revenue, why don't we take that revenue and put it in reserve? Mr. Moon, would you agree that we need something in reserve?
We got some budgets that went over too.
We have, they shouldn't have. That's another issue. They should not, somebody should have. have, somebody should have caught that when they went over and said, listen.
Obviously, they did went over your budget.
'Cause you shouldn't be going over budget unless there's some approval of harm or something different that's been changed in it. Mr. Moon, when you say we need to put something in reserve, you talked about reserves last time we met, and we've got.
We're gonna have to have a reserve, and the county's gonna run it.
You have fluctuations in budgets either way, and you'd almost have to look at each department and see what happened as to, to why they went over. Going under is always good.
Right, would it be wise today, then, can I say this, would it be wise today to put a pen in this second reading, and let's have a workshop, and let's go over that with a budget workshop, and, and try to organize out?
Before we asked y'all, did y'all wanna work, y'all said we didn't need no workshop.
Mr. Scott. Mr. Chair. With all respect to you, Mr. Chair, I just got this packet yesterday from, uh, Ms. Jamie, I looked at, we got the ambulance service here, where they went over their budget, approximately seventy-seven five thousand, somebody in turn turned around and put seventy more additional thousand dollars in this year's budget, where did we get that kind of money at? I didn't, I hadn't seen this, where did we get this kind of money from to put in the budget?
Well, I know when we met with all the department heads, or they did, we went out there afterwards, they met with us, and everybody sent me five.
We didn't have this before.
But there's, you got anything else?
Yeah, I mean, the, the whole, the whole budget's like, is where they get ten, twelve, and extra thousand dollars, and he, where's all this money gonna come from?
You work for Sheriff, or did your budget ever fluctuate in?
But what I'm saying, who instructed these norms? Who, who this came before? Mr. Gray, did you have it? You, you, all these increases in all these budgets, who, who put this in?
Most of the increase gonna be based on the two percent salary increase, um, and really, really trying to make out for, for retirement benefits, gone up three percent last two years, in health insurance, that's probably the majority of the increases.
This one, one I'm looking at right here, the ambulance service, seventy, seventy, seventy-seven thousand dollars over the budget, where did we get seventy-seven more thousand dollars put back in the entry?
And Mr. Gadd, I understand the increases of the retirement and the insurance, but surely, it's not eight or ten thousand dollars per department, is, is the increase down?
No, depending on what their salary level is, on that, you're looking at ambulances, uh, sorry, five hundred thousand, or two percent of that is ten thousand.
But that's not all the way across the board, everybody should be getting that, I understand.
Yeah, that's what I was just, for.
And then some people get more than that, and they don't have the budget that he has.
Mr. Gray, did you talk to, uh, Mr. Graham about his, uh, his situation with ambulance?
I, I haven't had the time to talk with him much, I briefly spoke with him, but that, that's gonna need.
If Randy need the money, that's one thing, but, but seventy-five thousand dollars, you go, his budget was set at, uh, one million three hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. That's what he actually spent, his budget was one million two hundred seventy-five, so that means he went over seventy-seven thousand dollars over his budget. Now, we got a new budget coming out from where we put additional seventy thousand dollars in his budget.
Well, I wasn't in on the initial discussions, but it sounds like we need, I do need to sit down and talk with him about that.
But if we pass this today, if we pass this today, that's what he gonna get, that's just what he anticipate gonna get.
Well, you're just doing second reading, now, I know y'all got some questions about whether you can change between second and third.
Mr. Bear?
The only thing is you got.
I rely on you, not on.
Well, I'm just telling you, there's no reason to have a public hearing if there's, if there's not the ability to change what you pass on third reading.
I mean, all these increases, yes, the day, the first day I seen all these increases, and I wanna know where all this money coming from, that, the increase, he's gonna need budgets.
You, if this is what was advertised to be voted on today, and if there's no amendments to it, you pass it today, you still have the opportunity to change that budget ordinance before third reading.
So you're saying all this they got in this budget, pad it up, can be changed?
You can change it before third reading, 'cause you're gonna listen to what the public has to say about your budget ordinance, and the public here, and you may want to change it based on what the public has to say too.
So, Mr. Gray, you saying that y'all sent the five thousand additional dollars to put in this budget?
As it's presented, it's balanced.
Seventy-five more thousand dollars, where we gonna get it from?
Well, you have to look at the overall picture.
You looking at the projected revenue that's coming in.
That, another, another department's.
Your team, my money's on another workshop.
That, another department's.
Well, I agree, we need to do another workshop, and we don't need to pass this reading with this stuff, can't.
I agree, another workshop.
All right, we got a motion and a second on this, all in favor? Any opposed?
We're opposed, 'cause that's forty-three, that's second reading fast.
Number ten.
Wait, Mr. Chair, let me ask you a question, if you, if you present that as to having a, I know you passed your reading to pass the second reading, so you, you're just not gonna have another workshop?
Yeah, we can have another workshop, I ain't gotta put it on the agenda here, today I've got another workshop.
I understand that, okay, so we forty-three, that's it.
All right, ten, executive session. Economic development matter, Harbor Freight, and legal matter, the town of Lakeview, require a motion, need a second session? Are now out of executive session, and there was no action taken. Number eleven, a German, requires a motion.
I make the motion, Ray, you're.
I second.
You got a second? All in favor? Any opposed?